Okay McKinley, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can. You're coming in loud and clear.
Thanks for the heads up on that.
No problem.
Make a motion to approve the treasury semi annual report.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? So the first line is the balance or the first one, the bottom figure is the balance. The second is revenues with expenses underneath that, correct? Yes, I'm sorry. So balance of fourteen million seven hundred fifty thousand eight hundred thirty six dollars and forty eight cents. I have a motion in second to receive the treasury semi annual report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number seven, receive the quarterly revenue report from the Wright County Auditor. Reporter's report, quarterly auditor's report ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Five thousand five hundred copies at a dollar a piece, flat books and mats, three hundred ninety nine dollars. Fireworks permits seventy dollars and voter registration list, no requests for those. I would accept the motion to receive the auditors.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in second to receive the quarterly revenue report from the Wright County Auditor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry. Item number eight, receive the quarterly revenue report from the Wright County Recorder. Okay, this is the quarterly revenue report from April first, twenty twenty three through June thirtieth of twenty twenty three. These collected totaling twenty six thousand three hundred thirteen dollars.
That's our portion within, that's what we get.
Yeah. And then sent to the, sent to the state fifty five thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and ninety six cents. Are there any questions concerning the recorder's quarterly report?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the, to receive the quarterly revenue report from the Wright County Recorder. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number nine, review and take action on Wright County employer of record for building families, early childhood Iowa area board. Uh, the first one is item number A, building families, community adolescent pregnancy prevention coordinator. Uh, this will be Tiffany. Go ahead McKinley.
Sure. These are, um, you know, as you know, building families has Wright County as our employer of record. And this is um, an update to the agreement that we've had for gosh, I suppose, seven or eight years now, or yeah, something like that. And we, Betty did find a few things in there that needed revising and updating, but there's no major substantive changes from what we've worked in the past. Um, it is past uh, July one with this, but since our salaries um, didn't change, uh, we, we didn't receive an increase that that shouldn't be a problem as this agreement um, doesn't need renewing necessarily. Unless uh, something changes. So that's kind of where that's at. And Betty, you want to add anything there?
No, that is pretty much like, like you said, with, without having any salary changes. It, it cleaned up, some of the terminology was, was cleaned up. I had the original and so.
Okay. And then you want to, uh, do we need to do these separate?
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh, I would accept um, motion to approve the Wright County employer of record for building families for the community adolescent pregnancy prevention coordinator.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Go ahead McKinley on the executive director.
Sure. That's, so that's my position there. It's basically the same thing um, as with Tiffany's. Uh, there are salaries were status quo, so um, it's more of a cleanup of some of the language in the contract than anything else. But once again, no uh, no substantive changes.
Any question? I would make a motion. All right, county employer of record, building families and early childhood Iowa area.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, item number ten, Jeremy, I was assistant engineer, secondary roads update.
Update from last week's activities, um, believe still prepping eleven schedule gravel roads. Um, they're also doing some one of their own routes. Going three to dial from Belmont at both times set complete and so on one in the real area is sixty six percent. Trucks last week hauling gravel on leisure in Minneke, um, hauling top dress limestone to your three scheduled gravel miles. And then we had the hard surface route some over the better. Nineteen workhorse completed last week. Uh, one service, six tile, one sign, nine culverts and one right away ditch. Uh, also back to either business part mode. Our granular program update, year three scheduled gravel were fifty four percent complete. That's sixty nine of a hundred and twenty six segments are that are completed. All remaining year three gravel miles will get modified at two hundred and twenty five tons per mile. Year three scheduled top dress is thirty eight percent complete and that's twenty five and sixty five segments. And as far as construction, um, I'll move to uh, black tops off adult will be closed as of this morning. So that's a sixty five day working contract. So like the other four hours.
Excellent. Um, the modification on the top dress, uh, that's additional tonnage?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's additional. That's all we had. Um, I'll see, contact me this week and we'll be gone until Thursday.
Thank you. Any questions? Uh, meetings?
Uh, nothing. Oh, uh, no meetings did uh, just had a couple complaints at Sportsman's Park working that out with the adjacent uh, neighbors and conservation. Maybe uh, animals not on leashes, running over uh, bothering the uh, neighbors animals and things like that. So talk to conservation, we're putting uh, uh, some new signs and uh, cleaning up a little bit.
And uh, I didn't have any meetings.
I'm talking to you. Did you get a word with Tom Engineer, the county attorney on the files, on the files?
That's today. So we're, we're working on the service. On the, on the uh, the manual piles.
Okay.
We'll find out, should know today on the service. I know it was sent out to him.
To find out whether or not the letter was actually served.
Yes, yes, the service, the actual service, yes.
Uh, our next event is our timed events. Uh, we'll stand in recess until nine fifty five. It's nine fifty five. We are out of recess. Again, this is a timed event, so uh, I will wait until ten o'clock to uh, begin the item number one. Was that a sermon?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. That better.
Much better. What are you saying?
I forget to smile.
You're thinking so hard.
No, and we, and we got the recorder down here for later on.
Yeah.
Okay.
I put everything in the hair. Highlighting my.
What's that?
In your boxes.
Yes, I got it.
You have it?
I got it. Oh yeah, I see. Brundage, right? We're good. He's the last name. Okay, it's ten AM. Uh, item number eleven. Be a public hearing on the proposed ordinance number sixty six that would repeal and replace Wright County ordinance number eighteen and enact a new right of way control ordinance. Um, just before we uh, open the public hearing, I would like to read uh, the title again. Uh, ordinance number sixty six entitled and, and ordinance repealing and replacing Wright County ordinance number eighteen and ordinance to protect and regulate secondary roads right of way and enacting a new right of way control ordinance to regulate certain occupancies and uses of county right of way. So under the purpose statement, it's to establish a policy and proceeded, procedure to manage, control and maintain the county's road and highway right of way for the long term public benefit, including adopting provisions for the regulations and inspection of various right of way occupancies and uses. And to establish rules and procedures for permitting the occupancy and use of the county's road and highway right of way by private industry or other third parties for their facilities, as well as for permitting subsequent work on said facilities. And to recover and allocate costs associated with permitting occupancy and use of the county's road and highway right of way. And to mitigate inconveniences to the public occasion by the emplacement and maintenance of facilities in the county's road and highway right of way. And to enact penalties for violators and recourse by the county for improper use, crossing, presence or other violations of this ordinance within county road and highway right of ways. I'm gonna ask Adam if he would like to um, add any quest or add any statements to uh, what I've just read. After reading the purpose statement of this.
At this point Dean, I'm uh, gonna refer everything to Logan Brundage if he has any statements. But maybe we should open the public hearing first and then take any statements in that and, and record those.
Okay. All right. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion in second to open the public hearing uh, on the proposed ordinance number sixty six that would repeal and replace Wright County ordinance number eighteen and enact the new right of way control ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Dean, do you want to have a, a sign in list for the, for the public hearing?
Yeah, at least for those who speak.
Do you have a note?
I do. I've got one. Yeah.
Okay. So if everyone would just sign your name and if you, what company you're with or if you're a landowner.
I know you're in speak. We just, okay. So Kylie, you're, you'll be first. Uh, I guess Adam, did you have anything that you wanted to add or uh, Logan, did you have anything that you wanted to add before I opened it up for public comment?
This is Logan Brundage, uh, attorney for all, at Allers and Cooney. I do not have any additional comments, Dean, before the public hearing begins.
Okay. So my understanding is that uh, without enacting this ordinance and these procedures, uh, something that is not recognized as a utility already such as the REC that has the right to be into the, in the right of way. Um, we would not be able to permit uh, a company such as Raceline uh, that is wanting to do a gathering line and put it in the road right of way. Uh, we would be unable to permit that. Is that clear, Adam and Logan?
Yeah, Dean, and the reasoning behind that is, is that our easement does not cover that sort of private facility. So we do not have the permissions to give a private facility um, to the rights to our uh, to our easement. Our easement is for road use purposes only. Um, very defined in the code for that. Um, and that's in chapter three oh six point four six. Uh, public utility um, has the ability to use the road right of way. So not a private facility. So that is why um, enacting this uh, ordinance, we, it allows the county to do that under the, the terms of this ordinance.
Right.
Anything you want to add to that, Logan?
No, I think that's the basic outline. Um, Adam. Beyond the fact that um, the private entities still need permission from the underlying landowner.
Bye.
So a little more formal than I usually do. It's a lot of time for these things. I'm limited to three minutes. I, I have something actually prepared.
Okay.
Set the stage.
Okay.
Um, so Chief Judge of the Southern District of Iowa, Judge Rose recently reaffirmed our position that Summit Carbon, Summit Carbon Solutions for Shelby County Iowa Board of Supervisors case. The judgment clearly states that federal regulation and state law plans ordinances at the county level of pipelines. Similar to the proposed ordinance here, the ordinance passed in Shelby County requires companies to apply for a county permit, potentially changing the planned route of the pipeline even after they proceed to state level permit from the IAV. This could stop Summit from constructing a pipeline even if the IAV says that they can't. If a local law makes it impossible to follow a state law, then that local law can't be enforced. According to Iowa law, pipeline companies need to get approval from highways, railroads, federal and state agencies when they apply and build a pipeline. These laws don't mention local or town, local town or city governments implying that local municipalities are not supposed to be part of the approval process for a pipeline construction. Lastly, in the interest of the public, the court noted that the county may not have unenforceable ordinances in a roundabout attempt to undermine valid federal and state laws. Even beyond the recent ruling, which clearly outlines the federal and state authority, three twenty dot four of the Iowa code states, the State Department of Transportation in case of primary roads and other supervisors in case of second roads, on written application designating the particular highway and part of the highway, the use of which is desired, may grant permission to lay gas mains in highways outside of cities to local municipal just, just contributing plants or companies, but not to pipeline companies. This section shall not apply to or include pipeline companies required to obtain a license from the Utility Division of the Department of, of Commerce. The reason the legislator, legislator included the pipeline exception in section three twenty dot four is because it has already given the IAV the authority to decide pipeline routing in section four seventy nine, four seventy nine A and four seventy nine B. This falls directly in line with Judge Rose, Rose's recent ruling that the permitting of pipelines falls to the jurisdiction of the state and federal governments. Pipelines go through rigorous regulations by experts to obtain all required permits. Although we often talk about FINSA and IAV, we also work with, with various other entities, the Army Corps of Engineers through Nationwide Permit Fifty Eight, utility line activity for water and other substances. This permit covers four, four of the Clean Water Act, section ten of the Rivers and Harbors Act and section one oh six of the National Historic Preservation Act. We also submitted section four oh eight permit to the Army Corps of Engineers, which reviews impacted civil works projects. A joint permit will be submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers and the Department of Natural Resources. The joint application covers impacts to waters of the US as well as four oh one waterfall quality certification, floodplain permits, sovereign land permits in coordination with DNR regarding federal and state threatened species, rare natural communities and sensitive habitats. At the federal level, there's also US Fish and Wildlife Services, the Iowa Department of Resources oversees its warm water permitting, de-watering, water discharge and water allocation. The Iowa Historic, Iowa State Historic Preservation Off, Office or Department of our project as well. The state and federal regimes have a large hand in regulating and permitting pipelines. The proposed ordinance would impose additional local requirements on an activity that is state and federal, federal regulatory bodies are being governed in permit. As a result, they are preempted by both federal and state law. We understand the counties have questions and concerns and representatives from Summit Carbon have been and continue to be happy to meet with representatives of the county to answer those questions and discuss their concerns. We do not believe that the ordinance is appropriate as a matter of policy and more importantly, we know that it would conflict with both state and federal laws. In all practical aspects, this ordinance would prohibit Summit Carbon's from pipeline go, from going through the county and thus deny farmers and ethanol plants the proj, the projects benefit. Thank you for that.
Did anyone have any questions for Kylie concerning her statement?
No, not at this time.
Who's next on the list?
Chris?
Yep, you're next. Um, first of all, our goalie co-op, Cornell P. Um, so we operate the ethanol plant here as CEO of the company in, in Wright County, over Goldfield. Um, a couple of things sort of to the on what Kylie said, we, um, that Judge Rose's decision, uh, ruling obviously anticipated uh, with the, the hearing over Shelby County. Um, similar, similar setup, um, or ordinance that were, were, um, were approved county level, um, challenged with federal board by Summit. We last week hired local, our local council to just give us like a flavor of hey, is, is this ordinance that belong to follow the same path, you know, and, and um, I think that you, you kind of heard Kylie say it there, but our, our local attorney's right kind of guy um, gave the same opinion um, that yes, this order is going to get challenged or absolutely could be challenged um, under the same vein that the Shelby County um, case was, was challenged and ultimately won um, by, by Summit, some in that case. So I think that a couple of things for us, one, you know, we're, we have a long-term vested interest in this county, uh, both from co-op uh, members, um, residences, place of the business, um, and, and our operations. We, we are uh, very optimistic and excited as we've ever been about our opportunities in ethanol and corn production um, going forward under this um, under the current uh, with, with the opportunity to realize carbon markets um, and the value that those could bring um, over the next several years. And so we are currently evaluating projects. Um, we, we've signed on for additional projects we think are going to help Cornell P. Um, and then be to be help our home producers. Um, I, I look at um, this new elevator we have constructed right up here in North Clarion a, a, a year ago, fall of a year ago, you know, that was a project that the co-op board was eager to approve. Um, really good for local members, really good for local farmers and it's a long-term um, asset that will be used a long time in this county. We don't have ethanol markets. All those things did not come into play. Um, we recently, and we feel very fortunate that we are with a company that has um, at this point, a high likelihood to execute on this project. Two and a half years ago, when we, when we entertained that idea of partnering with Summit, we didn't, we couldn't say that. Today, we can't say that. There's a high likelihood that they're going to be able to execute on this project. Fact matters, there's a lot of ethanol plants in this country that are not in a position. Um, we had an informal conversation with, with one of the, uh, we're a member from a Wisconsin plant that's just, just, just happened. We, our plant manager did. And um, you know, his comment was uh, we are in trouble, quite honestly, because they, they're in the exact opposite position that we are. They're not going to be able to access these markets. And it, it feels like that there's going to be um, some left behind facilities. We do not want that to happen right now. We do not want that to happen, Cornell P. We do not want that to happen for our corn growers. And we don't want, and, and if it's legal and, and all the, and it can be held, fine. But we do not want to see this county um, go down a path that's, that ultimately will, could cost us a bunch of money if, if we're in that Shelby County case a year from now. And a year from now, we're hoping that we can be constructive and add value to these jobs, to this market, to this tax base that is going to last for a long time. That, that's, that's how we view this situation.
Any questions for Bruce?
Mark Wiggins.
Mark.
I'm Mark Wiggins. Uh, I was gonna, I'm the chairman of the board at Cornell P. in Goldfield. I was gonna come as a representative of that, but I'm here as myself, as a businessman, a farmer and a landowner, Wright County taxpayer. And I feel like you guys are being led down a premier's path here. And you know, thank God, with our forefathers had, in the Iowa legislature and the federal legislature had foresight to not let counties and localities control things like Summit Pipeline. Because it's obvious you people are not uh, able to do that in a level manner and you get let down. Level manner, and you get let down a primrose path by some attorneys. It's going to cost me, every taxpayer in this room. A shit ton of money when you have to pay them and then you're going to have to go back to court and you're going to lose. Pay something else in for your fees. I'm very disappointed in it. All of it. All I have to say.
Will Higgins.
Will.
Yeah, good morning. My name is Will Higgins with Raceline Alternative Energy. Uh, Raceline Alternative Energy is a developer of renewable natural gas products in Iowa, um, and across the country where not only do we develop, but we. Uh, develop project, manufacture the equipment, uh, construct the sites and and operate the the biogas facilities. So, uh. We, there's a project that, uh, we've been developing in Wright County that includes twenty four farms that we would. Uh, we would on twenty four swine farms where we cover the manure stores, boones, capture the biogas and transport that biogas via small diameter gathering line. To a central location for upgrading and processing and injection into existing natural gas infrastructure. Uh, we believe this project will further our mission, uh, to provide renewable energy, ecological services, uh, wildlife habitat and, you know, in keeping with our mission of of cleaner air, cleaner water, healthier soil and. Increased revenue for for producers, um, as well as a a starting point to provide opportunity to produce the involved farms of all size types. Uh, we believe that our use of the or our proposed use of the right way. Uh, is in keeping with the intent of the the right way to get product from a farm to a market. Uh, as a an Iowa landowner and resident, um, as well as a project developer, I can appreciate the objectives of the board. Uh, with this ordinance to give clear requirements to projects within the county. Um, however, some of the language that's included in that ordinance, uh, we believe does the opposite and prohibit our project from moving forward, um, currently. Um, and and as really, so we thank, thank you for your time. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity to work on language, uh. For the ordinance for the county that would allow a project like ours to move forward.
Good. And we receive your comments and we will enter those, uh. Specific comments concerning the ordinance into the public record.
Ken Norm.
Ken.
I don't have anything. Um, I was just a quick question. I know you made the statement doesn't include the public utilities, right?
Correct.
So, um, just clarifying that. If all you need to do.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think obviously.
Austin.
I I don't have anything to add.
Bill Sullivan.
I don't have any additional comments. Thank you.
Robert Watts.
Well. At that FISA meeting in Des Moines. Very much determined to FISA federal doesn't have a. Control of sighting. And despite what the judge said. Like there she was wrong. Playing simple. Because. You you made that pretty clear down in Des Moines. But. Seemed to me, I mean, the answer seemed pretty clear.
Right.
But FISA didn't have. Control oversight.
No, I U B has got control oversight is my understanding.
By U B or the or local doesn't make too much difference. It's not fed, the federal doesn't have anything to do with it. Despite what the judge said. But. I think maybe she should have listened to me.
You do.
She knew she was going to have that. As far as I can see.
Any other comments?
That's it.
Yeah. Um. I've got some questions, but I don't know if I should ask them, uh. I I guess I will, uh. And I guess I'm posing this to, uh, Logan and to Adam. In Kylie's statement, she talks about, uh. US highways and primary highways. We have, uh. Nine hundred and sixty-six miles of roads in Wright County. And so I guess my concern is the crossing of not a highway, but, uh, a gravel road. A farm to market. Is there any? Um, Kylie talked about preemption and preemption that the judge talked about in the Shelby County case, which the Shelby County case was not about. Road right of ways. It had nothing to do with road right of ways. Uh, I've read that decision and I understand where you're coming from with that question, uh, but my question to Logan and Adam would, uh, be. My understanding is is that the county would have jurisdiction over those. Roads that are not state highways. I E Highway Seventeen, Highway Three. And then my question would be about the gravel roads and the county roads. My understanding was we had jurisdiction on that. I'll open that to either Logan or to Adam.
I'm going to refer that to Logan.
Okay.
I Dean, um. The county is a secondary road authority. And there are specific I U B administrative rules. Related to pipelines that recognize. Uh, they refer to highway authorities, which is why we've drafted the ordinance to rec reference both road. Authorities and highway authorities, um. But the administrative rules recognize that there are highway authorities that have jurisdiction. Over, uh. Routing of the pipeline where it would cross. A road or highway.
Including the secondary road?
Likely including a secondary road. The administrative. Rules, uh, identify a highway, a railroad right of way, or rivers or other bodies of water specifically. They don't say gravel roads, um.
They say secondary roads.
Does not say secondary road.
Yes. Alright. So, uh. That would be my concern in if this was to come, you know, obviously it would probably come before the Northern District Judge because that's who we would be under, but, um. Is is how that judge would interpret that, whether or not, uh, it was preempted or not. Since it doesn't specifically say, because Judge Rose, uh, was. Very liberal in her comments about, uh, preemption and. And implied or not implied, um. You know, I feel like as the county supervisor that I'm charged with, um. Ensuring. That those secondary roads are maintained as they're supposed to be, um, I think that her inter- Judge Rose's interpretation would say that that's you are implying that. And so, uh, any comments concerning that?
I would just refer to some of the the preamble language of the draft ordinance. That set out. Some of the road language and some of the highway language. But I I don't want to speculate on how a judge, uh. Would rule on preemption.
Yeah. The comments, you know.
What?
Betty, did you?
Well, what sections of this ordinance are they? Is it the entire ordinance or is there sections of the ordinance and verbiage that you don't agree with? Does anybody have? A section?
Raceline was, uh, was specifically on there.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we won't provide red lines at this point. I could go back and edit that my legal team, but it's regulated at the state and federal government levels.
Richard Paul, any questions? It's time. There you go. So, uh. To Logan and Adam then, uh, Logan, have you seen the comments that, uh, race line, the line for line, uh, comments that they had?
I have reviewed those, yes.
Okay, and are there concerns with those or current concerns with what you've heard today that, uh. That would stop us from proceeding, uh, with the the first reading? Or do you feel that there should be a working session where possibly we would change any language?
Adam and I had the opportunity to go through the comments on Friday, um. There are some that. May require board input, um, because we can't legislate for the county. It's up to the board as the legislative body. So. Uh, if the board had the opportunity to review those or based on any of the comments today and has concerns. Uh, and would like to enter a working set or schedule a working session before going forward with the first reading, um. That may be, uh, a good route to proceed down.
Right.
I would, uh. Logan, would it be okay for any of the participants today, um, to submit those comments prior to, uh, the working session?
And you're referring to whether or not Summit would have, uh, specifics concerning the ordinance. Is that what you're referring to, Adam?
Yes, because I want to make, I want to make sure that they're able to, because we were supposed to take comments today, obviously. I want to make sure that their comments are noted, um, that we can review them if we are going to go into a a a working session, if we do postpone. The first reading, um, to make sure that we carefully consider, um, all parties involved.
Yeah. Alright. But I don't think, Chris, you had anything specific on the ordinance or Mark. I understand your comments, um.
I could just share just, and again, you know, we hired our own local attorney just to say, you know, are we heading down the right path? And I think that this may be the broader questions I would ask. You know, the war is, um, if if and and I don't know about their their project, but in in I believe Summit's crossing thirty seven counties in Iowa. Um, in a little bit of my my thought after consulting with our attorney is. Why are we the only county that has to do this? If they're if they're crossing thirty-one. They're either going to get their permit or not. Or else there's thirty other counties that are just, they're going to have to go through this process. And I I I would just advise. Not, um. Don't, don't rush in us into a spot where we're where we're, you know. Like logically thinking things about, why don't think that federal judge was maybe right in a ruling and it would apply? I mean, that 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 leads me to think that we are going into this thinking we may end up federal court. And we're one of thirty-one counties. That that's all my perspective is listening to our attorney and just get his his feedbacks. I mean, I guess.
And so your input would be to let somebody else be the first, and then what if nobody is the first?
Or ask broader questions, right? I mean, um.
Other question. I guess, uh, my question to you would be, would your attorney, uh, be? Go through the ordinance and present?
I mean, I don't know that it it's our, um, position to hire our, because it's not our permit. I mean, obviously, we're, we are the local, a a big local benefactor. There's many. You know, many, many local benefactors of this project. But no, that that was our attorney's legal opinion. He's like, well, it's not your permit, you know, go and give comments, but we're not going to, um. You know, we're 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 tangential to the to it, but, uh, but I but I think that that that's our, that's our feel locally. It's like. Are we, um, are we pushing something that isn't there or what, you know, why, why do we want to single out these two? Um, uh, under what, why do we want to single it out? Is it just in because we don't believe that they can operate and must be pass it? And we really don't, I mean, we're we're supportive of them operating, um, then, you know, why are we, why do we push this issue?
Correct, but I think that that's, uh, that was the genesis of this. Entire change to this ordinance is because we don't think that they have, that we can place them there. Uh, specifically race line, um, not a utility, not filing with the I U B. Um, being able to permit them to be in the right way. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I said, I don't know. And and just just for clarity, so we like, I U B recently concluded a rulemaking, so we have to provide notification to the I U B. And we have to provide all the information that we would provide Fanta to the I U B prior started construction. But yeah, we don't have to apply for a permit.
Right.
So just for for clarification.
Right. And so we're trying to figure out, we're trying to, uh. Solve the problem that we've come up with, which is, uh, how do we permit? A private company who wants to go into the right of way, how do we do that?
That's not under I U B.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So are you making a distinction between race line's project, Summit's project, being that they're under I U B, um?
I like. Ask ask that question one more time.
Making a distinction between race line's project, who is not calling under I U B, and Summit, who has to go to the state to get all their permits.
No, I don't, I don't think that we are. I think we're making a distinction between what is a utility recognized as a utility and what is recognized as a, um.
Non-public utility.
Yeah, non-public.
Private facility, Dean.
Private, okay, private facility.
Facility, um, this, this doesn't necessarily always just include Summit and and, um. Race line. I mean, this could go to the local farmer trying, uh, like I've explained before, where a farmer has. A or a local landowner has, uh, uh, they have their house on, let's say, the west side of the street. And then their their cattle are on the east side of the street, uh, and they want to put a private water line. From their well to the east side of the street to their to their cattle. They would have to go through this and get, uh, a permit to do so because that is considered a private facility. And we would not, and we would not be able to allow them to just go ahead and do that because it's a private facility. That is a, uh, a taking of the right of way. Land ownership that we have no ability to give them.
So has that never happened in this county before? Like, that's just.
Well, we've never had race line come here before and say, we want to put something in the right of way.
No, like a water.
You can let Iowa select with culverts all over the county that run water pipes through. That weren't needed for drainage. You got there's dozens upon dozens.
Did you have, uh, for new organics, we do have a, uh, how many mile pipeline do we have in the ditch? With the new organics?
That is a public utility that is in the ditch for new organics. We do have umbilical lines that go through, but those are temporary umbilical lines. Um, they have received a permit to place a culvert in the roadway, which also could function as. Um, drainage from one side to the other. So there's never been in my time as engineer and assistant. I've never had anybody come to me and ask for a private water line to facilitate that type of scenario that I just said.
Yes. I'm not ready to act on it as of today. I'd like another work session. I I mean, I know we want to solve problems, but the same aspect of going to, but I don't want to create more problems, uh, with the judge's ruling. You know, that does put some, uh. Some flags up that, you know, I don't want to go down the road to litigate things, but, you know, the war stance is, but. I would like to do a little bit more research, a little bit more of a work session.
And I would agree because this is not a, this is a private that we cannot allow right now. As of right now, our ordinance does not allow private lines through anywhere in the county right of way. And this is letting the private come in. But yes, I'd like to, I don't want to pass this either as well till we have a work session on it, iron out the details.
Because if there is fact where the federal has can. Because if there is fact where the federal has can preempt us, you know, does that need to be written in the ordinance of what what things? Do preempt us and what things we can actually rule on.
Yeah, I don't think that you're gonna get that without. Without someone doing. Uh, it's not an excuse to stick your head in the sand and go. Okay, I see that there's an issue here and I'm not going to confront the issue um. I don't, I don't think that that is an. Isn't out, and I don't think that that's what we're called to do when we're elected to this position. I think that if we see that there's an issue. That is not permitted, that has been asked to be resolved, that that we would pursue it and resolve.
And I'm not opposed.
But I'm not opposed to.
Yeah, but I guess I'm not, I guess I'm not to the point to make. I I don't want to make that decision yet. I want a little bit more information.
Go ahead.
I would agree that we that knowing um the comments that have been submitted by race line and reviewing those with Logan that. Uh, a a postponement of the first reading would be uh my recommendation as the engineer to allow for. Further discussion and further research um. The I I I come back to my first question to Logan. Um, do public comments or the comments need to be submitted today? Or can we receive them prior to our work session and consider them? That was my worry is I don't want Summit Carbon not to be able to put their. Put their comments when they could have been, you know, because we had a public hearing for that specific thing. Um, if they if they have the ability to still put their comments on on paper um. That I would greatly. Want to receive those prior to doing the working session so that we can identify what needs to be worked on and not have to do multiple sessions or. Uh, you know, keep keep coming back to the same questions all the time. So if race line and Summit have the same question, we can identify it all at once.
So Kylie, your comments were general in nature. They weren't specifically. Line by line on the ordinance. Do you anticipate that you would want to submit that for? You want to just wait and see how the cards fall and?
I can't speak for how my legal will want to, legal team will want to handle it um, but in the past, no, the stance is that. Um, the ordinance as a whole is preempted and I guess from my understanding here, yeah. From Adam's kind of kind of sounding like you're taking three twenty dot four from the Iowa code and and using that. To to beef up your right of way ordinance, is that correct?
Adam, my question was directed at you.
I um have not reviewed three twenty dot four. Um, I would refer that back to Logan.
Can you restate your question?
I guess that the the basis of laying in the right of way on um what's given to the Board of Supervisors than three twenty dot four.
I don't remember seeing three twenty dot four referenced in here.
Yeah, I don't think. Just we're laying in the right of ways referenced in Iowa code.
The county has um. Authority over the right of way and and permitting authority um. Under three eighteen as well. So I think there's a couple different chapters. And there's chapters referenced in the ordinance that offer the basis for authority.
Three twenty dot four, it's just the State Department of Transportation in case for primary roads, Board of Supervisors in case of secondary roads. On written application designating the particular highway or part of the highway used, which decided may grant. Permission to lay gas mains and highways outside of cities. And goes on, but. I was just wondering if that's kind of where the code is coming from and and how to deem who lays. We just.
I don't know, but I I will find that out.
Three twenty dot four just explicitly, you know, the end of it says this section shall not apply to or include pipeline companies. Required to obtain a license from the Utilities Division of the Department of Commerce.
So it sounds like that exempts carbon some solutions. I mean, at least on without being familiar with it and on uh on hearing what you've said. And and so again, I would ask you. Does Summit Carbon Solutions, would they be able to uh? To give specific comments on parts of the ordinance? That they feel affect them, which I think you said you don't think that it that you think that. That three twenty point four excludes you because you're going through the Iowa Utility Board?
Yes.
Okay, um. And so before a working session, because I want to schedule that uh today, uh so that. If we're gonna proceed down this road, we can. We can do that um. Is there, does Wednesday? Uh, Adam, you're out of town uh till when?
Wednesday, I was hoping we could do it Thursday, but I I I I want to make sure that Logan has the chance to uh uh. Um, answer my question in the idea that Summit can still. Uh, submit their comments after this public hearing. I want to make sure that that is very clear.
Yes.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Logan.
I was just gonna say the board can choose to hold the record open if it would like.
Do we hold the record open for or one entity or when we hold the record to open, it's open to everyone?
It would be open to everyone. Um, you can hold it open to a date certain, which if you set it for the. Set that being the the work session, if you have a a date and time for that, uh you can have a motion, just hold it open until the work session.
Well, Thursday is the twentieth of July. Uh, do you have a time that works for you, Adam, or either of you two?
Rory's better.
Morning.
I have a a research project that I'm sitting on for uh simple slab. Uh, bridges at two P M. So morning would be best. I refer back to Logan of his uh of his availability.
If we could do some time between eight and eleven, that's good for me.
Eight to eleven, so I would ask that the public comments be open until zero eight hundred on July twentieth. Um, which uh at that time they would close, we would hold the working session and um. And then we would schedule the uh first reading if we're gonna proceed down this course. Does that sound correct, Logan? For the procedures?
Yes.
Okay.
So my question, uh, if we were to say enact this and and go at this point, you're saying that you would be exempt from our. Because of that.
It's not written in a way that we're exempt, um but I think it's basis of the code that that there.
That it could be found that they would be exempt.
So they wouldn't, they would have to apply for a permit. They wouldn't have to follow our our rules because.
Because the Iowa Utility Board. According to three twenty point four is what's.
The location of of a pipeline that's regulated at at the state.
But you'd have to have a permit.
Yeah, and then.
Okay, so you understand if you want specific comments.
Yeah, given by Wednesday.
Right, okay.
Post Thursday.
Okay. Is all of that clear as one to everyone? Okay. Very good. I'd like a motion to, unless somebody else has comments or questions. I would accept the motion to close the public hearing. We're not, we're not closing it, right? Because we're giving the comments open or are we closing the public hearing and the comments are remaining open?
Just leave the public hearing open. You can close it, put it on the agenda for the work session and you can close it first thing then.
Okay, okay, alright. So intentions to close the public hearing at zero eight hundred on the twentieth of July. That working session will take place here in the supervisors' chambers. And Logan, I assume that you will zoom in or you'll be here in person?
Uh, I'm zoom would be great.
Okay, right, we'll coordinate that.
Dean, I want to thank everybody for coming in um and uh. For submitting their comments, because I think this will help us out tremendously on on trying to figure out a uh a a good. Ordinance if there needs to be one.
Alright, very good. So we will table item number, uh I would accept a motion to, or I would make a motion to table item number twelve. Uh, and item number thirteen.
A second then.
I have a motion and a second to table item twelve and uh item thirteen, which we're setting the the dates for the second. The first reading and the second reading um of ordinance number sixty six and ordinance repealing and replacing right county ordinance number eighteen. Uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, our next event is at eleven. We will be in a recess until uh ten fifty five. Okay, we are back in uh out of recess. Um, item number fourteen on the agenda is eleven eight impossible post stretch in foul. Following Iowa Code twenty one point five Charlie to discuss strategy with council in matters that are presently in litigation. Or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would likely prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation. Um, I would accept a motion to go into close session.
So move second.
I have a motion and a second to go into closed session in accordance with Iowa Code twenty one point five Charlie. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, we are now in closed session uh present.
If anyone's out there.
Morning. Again, I apologize for the delay. It's twelve o'clock. It's getting for eleven o'clock, but we're still in closed session. I'm moving to item fifteen, drainage trustee to D D one oh seven um and we're here to talk about the uh Pogi. The Pogi land bridge in D D one oh seven. Of which we've had uh. Dan Weidmeyer of uh McClure Engineering. Do a uh a cost estimate and has worked with several. Contractors to uh determine the cost of a of the repair to the. Uh, land bridge that was petitioned by the Pogies.
So uh I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and proceed with the work order for the repair on the Pogi land bridges submitted by them.
I have a motion and a second to proceed with the uh repair. As petitioned by the Pogies on the land bridge on D D one oh seven. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Did you feel that there needs to be that the landowners uh that are concerned in the? Can I ever say that name? What is that called?
Classation.
Within the classification should be notified uh of this decision. Especially in view of the uh. The litigation that has preceded it and also um the the question of uh is it a district asset or isn't it? Or is it not a district asset um? Um, I'd like to set that or I would accept the motion to uh set that hearing date for the fourteenth of August.
There really wouldn't be a hearing, more or less a. I'll second that.
Uh, I have a motion and a second to set a landowner informational meeting on for August fourteenth.
Time?
To note of. To notify the landowners uh of the board's decision to uh proceed with the petition for repair um on the land bridge. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Anything? Else? I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.